I am now called to order the regular session meeting of the Board of Commissions of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, April 17th, 2018 at 6:30 PM. Roll call, please.
Mayor LaHusas.
Here.
Vice Mayor Banther.
Here.
Commissioner Seber.
Here.
Commissioner Kikta.
Here.
Commissioner Carr.
Here.
Tonight's invocation will be given by Reverend Smith. If you please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegion.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you for this glorious day that you have created. We thank you for your bright sunshine that you have allowed us to enjoy this day. Now we come to ask to bless this city, bless this mayor and commissioners as they make decisions regarding this city, crown them with wisdom and knowledge. I actually bless all those present here tonight, and especially our, our city staff and their leaders, our first responders. Bless them, and we just actually bless this entire city and all those that passed through it in your great name. We pray this prayer. Amen.
Plunge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here tonight. We will start our meeting tonight with public comments on the items that will not be covered tonight, will not be discussed this evening. If you have any comments, please come forward, state your name and your address for the record. You begin in four minutes.
Good evening, Board, Mayor Commissioners, Honorable City Clerk, Police Chief Cochen, and our Squire Jay. Couple of things I wanted to talk to you about, but first off, I want to address the Board here to let you know what kind of staff you guys have. I happened to attend a public meeting that City Manager LaCource, Paul, Rob, Tom, Chief, Chief Young, they all came and spoke to a group of residents in our area who probably hadn't been aware of some of the things that were going on. Oh, and Karen Lemons, I forgot, sorry. About what was going on in Tarpon, just to give them an update, and it was, I have to say, very professional, the way you handled it. I think you should do a road tour with it in a sense of going out to some other residences and areas of all parts of the city to, to display what's going on in the city. But what I really, really got a good feeling about, and I'll share this with y'all, is that everybody who spoke, you could feel the true nature of their care and love for this city. And that came through to me, and I appreciate that. And I just wanted to let you guys know, let the community know, because when televised, you won't see it again. But from someone who was there and who has a little perspective about, you know, what the staff in the city have to go through, I appreciate what you did. And, and again, as I say, I think it would be wise to maybe go to some of the other neighborhoods and areas that maybe are, let's say, undereducated in that regard. Okay, now, tonight we'll be dealing later with an issue with school resource officers. And a number of counties and cities facing financial crunches because of that. But why is that? Because of what our legislature did. Now, I don't have a problem with them asking to have officers in schools, someone who's trained to handle situations, but provide us the funding for it. But I still have to go back to the main issue. There was no ban on assault rifles. There was no legislation about magazine sizes. There was no changes about universal background checks and checks at gun shows and other ways that guns can be received and taken. So, let's still not get lost about the focus of what the issue was. Too many big bad guns in too many people's access. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Delakis. Any other public comments?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jake Franz. I don't personally know everybody yet in this town. I just moved here last month, and...
Would you please state your address for the record?
My address is 417 Ennis Drive, Tarpon Springs.
Thank you.
I was told that this might be the best outlet to discuss what I had an issue with when I come down. I love the town. I'm so happy I moved here. I am a little nervous as well. I went to register my boat, and I got online, and I did everything that I thought I was supposed to do. I looked and to see what I needed to do to bring, because I noticed that at Craig Park, you need a permit for your trailer. And I had pulled up everything that I have, and I've got a copy of everything that was required on the website. It states any government-issued photo ID, including but not limited to driver's license or passport, a most recent utility bill at your place of residence, as well as a current registration providing ownership of the trailer being permitted. My situation is I also am a homeowner in another state. And I went in with my government-issued ID, my registration showing it belonged to me, and my utility bill that I had just paid the day before at the water department. And she said that I am not a resident. But again, everything on the website for Tarpon Springs states any government-issued photo ID, utility bill, and registration. And I provided all those, and I was told that I still have to pay a non-resident rate, and I cannot comprehend that. So, if there's somebody that could explain that to me. There was, I was told that I had to have a driver's license from Tarpon Springs, but yet clearly on your website, it does not state that whatsoever. And it's quite, you know, it's about a $80 price difference. And I plan on paying this every year, but I would like to be considered a resident, to get the resident rate, since I am a homeowner. I do pay utilities, I do pay taxes, and I do have homeowner's insurance. And I would just like the Board to consider either changing their website to make it, you must have a Tarpon Springs driver's license as opposed to any government-issued photo ID, if that's the case. Otherwise, I would like to be able to consider myself a resident when I register my trailer every year for a permit.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Do we have any other comments?
Hi, my name is Thomas Knowles. I moved here about two years ago, Craig Drive. After we moved in, we found out that we get flooded, even if we get a couple inches of rain. Craig Drive fills up with water and dumps into our driveway, into our, into our home after a few inches of rain. I tried to deal with the city building manage, building management, but she said, said, yeah, she knows there's a problem. They made a mistake. On paper, my house is the same level, so it shouldn't be dumping into my house. But in reality, it's about a foot higher than my house, because the road was built up with no drainage system. So now I have water pouring in, even if I get three, four inches of rain, it's coming in the front door. I had to build a speed bump, like, you know, six inches high, and it's still letting block it. I just had a baby. I had a baby the year before, so I have a one-year-old and a two-year-old. And so far, we've been, every summer, we've been flooded out. We've been, we had to go rent somewhere else. We had to go to the need for six months last year. We had to go, we just have to keep leaving every summer. And this is our home. We came here, we, excuse me, if you don't understand me, I'm from Boston and got a thick accent. Sorry about that. Maybe a little way. But anyway, yeah, I guess, so I got two kids there. Now, anytime it rains, we can't sleep. We're getting all pumps, we're getting ready, we can't sleep. We had to, we had to run out of there, Hurricane Armin, Hurricane Irma, both of them, foot of water, running out of there, grabbing, trying to grab the dogs with their heads sticking out of the water, getting shocked by electricity. And while my wife was pregnant, I'm one of them. And so far, nobody's helped. We, we did the FEMA applications with, with the building department, and a year later, we called to say, hey, how's it going? Is it going through yet? And we were told, no, we, that's gone, it's all done. That, that was it. That was, that's all the response we got. That was all done.
Sir, what's your address again?
450 Craig Drive.
Thank you.
And we, we filed a lawsuit against the sellers for not telling us, because they didn't tell us that it flooded. We won that, but now they claim bankruptcy, and we're, they won't even step foot back into Florida. We couldn't, we haven't been able to get them here. We won, we won $352,000 from them, but they not giving us a penny. So, right now, we're really bumming. And that, that's my family. We wasted a lot of money trying, just living somewhere else and spending a lot of money, buying all new clothes, doing it. I mean, we get, we get insurance and everything, but it still doesn't come out to nearly as much as we should get. And then, all the time, it displaces us, and it's just horrible. It's a real nightmare, like, really a nightmare. I couldn't have, I was so happy moving down here. When I was driving down here with the truck and the dogs, I was so happy looking at the town and everybody I met. All my neighbors are awesome. I love them. I don't know, I don't know what else to do. We don't know what to do. We're just stuck there now. We owe, you know, we owe a lot of money on them. We put a lot of money down, which probably shouldn't have, because we could have used some now, but we still owe a lot of money. And, and now we're just really bumming. We need help. I don't know. I was told that Tarpon Springs didn't, has never helped, and they never will, but I'm asking for help, please, some kind of help, even if you put drains in or something. I got, I have pictures I can show you, though. Even just the other day, it was, it was flooded on six inches all the way up to my door. The street, just even if people put on their water, water fountains, their sprinklers across the street, goes down the street into my house. Goes down the street, everything goes down the street into my house. It slopes from both ways, not the whole street, but this whole street this way slopes to my driveway. And then, probably about 100 feet that way slopes back to, so I'm getting everybody's water, and not just, not just the street water. I'm getting all the water from all the front yards of everybody in the whole place. Like I said, it was, it's supposed to, it was equal in height on paper. And that's what Steve showed me, Steve Weiner showed me, that, that he said, look, Steve, clearly see, the street is a foot higher.
Can you finish up, because your time has expired?
Okay. I'm all set then. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Mayor, can I, can I ask the City Manager some questions real quick about the comments?
Okay.
Just, first with the boat trailer, is that true? It has to be a Florida ID?
Boat registration has to be registered in Florida.
So, when he said he had an out-of-state ID, is that why? So, it has to be a Florida ID?
The boat registration, the trailer registration is what they go by.
So, the trailer registration is registered in Florida. You can have an out-of-town ID, and that's fine, like a Georgia ID or whatever?
Yeah, you just have to establish a residency, and one, and that's why the trailer can't be, because that wouldn't be considered.
Okay, all right. And then, for the, for this gentleman's flooding, is there anybody we can get him in touch with?
There's a large file I have on Mr. Knowles and his issue that's been going on for a couple of years. There may be something, but I'll send that all to you. The Attorney has sent a deadline of March of last year on some action that the city could do for him that they didn't take advantage of. And, yeah, there's, I only look at the drainage thing, but I don't think that's the issue. And again, I'll send all you, the Commission, the rather long timeline that we've done, not only for the state attorney, for his ability to go after the homeowner for not disclosing it, but what we've tried to do, and we've exhausted all we can do, except we can't look at the drainage again. So, I'll send that file to all of you.
Isn't that where FEMA had gone out? Because there was another residence, a resident a couple of years ago that she flooded out as well. Because I know she's moved from her resident now. But from what I was, well, I won't say a lot on the record, but, because I'm not sure if I'm right or not. But I know there is a huge drainage issue over there. So, I know, like I said, FEMA was notified as well, and I don't know what the outcome of all that was. So, this has been an ongoing situation for you, quite a few years.
Couple of years, yeah. And I'll send you the whole timeline, but we will look, we can look at the drainage part of it again, but that's about the only portion we could look at.
The drainage is not something that we could correct?
I don't believe so, but we'll look at it again. Again, the whole issue was his house and dealing with his house, can it correct it? Again, it's too long to explain here. It's a long, two-years file. I'll send it all to you so you can see it, and we'll look at the other.
All right, thank you. Are there any other questions? I mean, any other comment? Yes, sir. Sir, you cannot speak from there, because that, it's, if you please get with the Mr. LaCource, Mr. LaCource.
Just write your phone number up on that pad that's up there.
Just put your phone number, we'll call you.
And we'll get somebody in touch with you.
You have to be there in order to be recorded. Thank you. Do we have any other comments? Here, none? Thank you. We now go to the proclamation. Number one is the National Volunteer Week. And I will read the proclamation. City of Tarpon Springs, Florida proclamation, whereas the mayor and commissioners are grateful to volunteers for their time, passion, energy, and talent to volunteering to make the City of Tarpon Springs a great place to live, work, and play. And whereas volunteers enhance the quality of life in Tarpon Springs by volunteering for the city advisory boards, at schools, places of worship, hospitals, youth groups, and other organizations that benefit our community. And whereas the mayor and commissioners recognize the unique contributions made by volunteers and encourage involvement through service. And whereas it's fitting to honor the many divisions who lend the time, skill, and efforts to making our community a better place. And whereas National Volunteer Week is more than 40 years tradition enacted in 1974 by President Nixon, that designates a special time to recognize and celebrate the contributions of volunteers. Now therefore, I Chris LaHusas, by virtue of the authority vested in me, as the mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, do hereby proclaim the week of April 15th through 21st, 2018 as National Volunteer Week. And I'm very happy to say that we have many volunteers here, people that they work on the senior information center and providing the services. If we please come forward and accept proclamation.
Mayor, can I say something? We also have...
One second.
Okay.
They want to take a picture of you. In the candid camera. Thank you, thank you. Do you want to say a few words? Thanks. One second.
Thank you very much. We're very happy to be a part of the new senior information center, which is at the library on Mondays through, and Thursdays from 10 to 2. We're there to provide information and assistance to seniors. Part of the goal, I believe, for the mayor was to help seniors age in place and to find solutions for transportation and other housing, other necessities for seniors. We're very proud to be part of this. Personally, I love this city. I've been here a long, long time. This doesn't pay nearly as well as when I was here, working here, but, but I'm very proud to be part of the city and to help out with this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. And I, I want to thank you all for donating your time and your services to our community. Also like to thank everyone for serving on the advisory boards and volunteering to other departments as well. Thanks for your service. Are there any Commission comments? Commissioner Seber?
Thank you, guys. I appreciate all your work. I wanted to also recognize that Lynn is a volunteer with the Community Garden and does a lot of volunteering and many hours. And we have two members in the back that are Merchant Association members who volunteer thousands of hours a year. I appreciate, you know, all the work that you all do, too. So, thank you to all our volunteers.
Thank you. Are there any other Commission comments? Are there any public comments on this item? Here, none? Thank you. Thank you so much. The next item is another proclamation. On Earth Day, Commissioner Carr will read this proclamation.
Thank you. City of Tarpon Springs, Florida proclamation, whereas humankind is currently facing tremendous global challenges affecting every community, and whereas people all over this earth, no matter their race, gender, or national origin, have a right to a healthy environment, and whereas the youth of the world are our most valuable resource and represent a source of endless creativity and potential, and whereas it is necessary for the citizens of our global community to develop green jobs and to build an innovative and equitable green economy to combat the global challenges, and whereas expanding environmental education and climate literacy is vital to enhance awareness, and whereas it is important than ever to act locally and to cooperate internationally and defend the environment, environmental process that has been gained, and whereas Earth Day is an annual reminder of the constant need for an environmental activism, stewardship commitments, and sustainability efforts. Now therefore, I Jacob Carr, or Commissioner Jacob Carr, by the virtue of authority vested in the mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, do hereby proclaim April 22nd, 2018 as Earth Day. And this will be mailed to the earth. It's going to be mailed, I'm not sure to hear.
Thank you. Are there any Commission comments? Are there any public comments on this item? Yes, ma'am.
Lynn Delzal, 1706 Palomino Drive. I really hadn't expected to say anything, but this is a great segue into Saturday, this next Saturday, the Community Garden is hosting a community cleanup. We go from Destin to the trail, from Martin Luther King to Pine Street. And last year, we had 47 volunteers, and we collected 368 pounds of, of mostly paper and other things. And all done with about three or four hours. People come out, the supplies are all provided by, by Keep Pinellas Beautiful, no cost. We have liability forms, we have water, we have sunscreen. So, just come join us for a community celebration, starting at the Community Garden, which is 116 North Ring Street.
Thank you. Any other public comments on this item? Here, none? Thank you. We now go to presentation, strategy plan update, Police Department Chief.
Thank you, Mayor, Board of Commissioners. Annually, we come before you and we update our five-year strategic plan. This plan is a blueprint for who we are and where we're going. And the interesting thing about this plan is it was really driven from the bottom up. Because if you, if you don't do it that way, if you don't keep it simple, and you don't have the input from the officers, and your first-line supervisors up through the major city chief, it's worthless. Also, crime prevention groups, commission, everyone's kind of got their fingerprints on this, because we're all involved in it. So, I'm going to go through, I have a lot of slides, so I got to get through this quick, or the City Manager is going to frown on me. So, if you have any questions along the way, if you have any questions along the way, please just, just ask me. So, here we go. So, we start off with the current strengths of the department. These were all here last year. They're all the same. So, really, nothing has changed with this. We really work hard on these, and, and it's kind of the bedrock of who we are. Add to this year recruitment, we are doing very well, and I'm proud of this. We are doing very well at attracting officers from other agencies. They want to come here. It's amazing, you know, they know our culture's good, our pay's good, our equipment's good, our technology's good. We are, we have a pipeline of experienced officers that want to work for us, so that is a definite strength. Retention of personnel, another area I'm really proud of. We have come a long way. We're really not losing anybody to the bigger departments. Every once in a while, we may, it's very hard to avoid, but we're not really losing people. And you know what the cost of turnover is. There's a quantitative side and a qualitative side. The quantitative side is how much it's going to cost you to train people, which is probably over $100,000. And a qualitative side is if you lose an officer five years' experience, that hurts real bad. It's hard to replace. Crime analysis, we hired a crime analyst from Virginia, highly trained with a lot of experience. She does a phenomenal job, so we've definitely added that to the strengths of the department. Weaknesses, we go here, staffing shortages, workload increases in the United States. Police workload is just on the rise. It's everywhere. Demand for service is really high. We crossed off the two I just talked about, losing veteran officers through attrition. It's no secret in this country that the generation gap between millennials, I'm sorry, with baby boomers, Gen X, and millennials is huge. And, and the millennial generation is going to be tasked with a lot of positions to fill, not only in our profession, but in the private sector also. Opportunities, same as last year. We just keep rolling with these. No anticipated threats. You got to know your external environment. You got to know what's coming at you. A lot of curveballs come at you in this profession. You got to be ready for it. So, these are the same as last year. Technology, anti-law enforcement sentiment, police academy standards, which keep increasing, which means longer, longer time, put someone through the academy. Media, and this is more geared towards social media and extremists. Political climate, this one's a biggie. We all know that this may be coming down the pipe. I don't really know too many people who vote against having a tax decrease, even if they may not understand how it all works. But I think we figured out, Mark, if I'm correct, about $470,000 hit to our general fund budget. If this passes, beginning of fiscal year 2020, this is going to hurt. So, we put that, we put that in there as an anticipated threat. We break this plan down into some simple areas, and there are, you know, three goals. You want to keep it simple, that's the key. Maintain enhanced community partnerships, infrastructure, staffing, and staff development. Maintain enhanced community partnerships, infrastructure, staffing, and staff development, so I'll go through these real quick. Goal one, the objective, seek, maintain, and streamline our approach to enhance community service and outreach. So second year accomplishments, because we're in the second year, I'm talking about the second year, we're actually in the third year of this plan, so kind of looking, looking back at what we've accomplished. We continue to reevaluate our vehicle take-home policy, majority of our vehicles are in the city. Due retirement, we'll change our homeless outreach officer. And we have a new homeless outreach officer, that's been in it about less than a year, Jacob Hollingsworth. So, he's doing pretty well, but it's a, it's a big task to accomplish, a lot of expertise needed in that area. We've added a peace team, and it's really major trills innovation, but we do this in the shift, these are officers that are tasked with proactive enforcement, doesn't know matter what it is, it's traffic, if it's homeless, if it's drugs, if it's teaching in a school, whatever it is, this team is tasked with doing it, and it's done at the patrol level. Continue our expansion of current community initiatives. This is the cornerstone of really who we are, foot patrols, business checks, night guys, bike patrols, cops and kids youth center, started by our city manager, we continue that program, and we've continued to build on it. Community offices in public schools, another big program, we go and we mentor kids in the elementary schools. Tenure vehicle take-home policy, third year goals, we always have that in effect, third year goals, continue to expand upon our current community policing initiatives, that's always one of the biggest thing we want to do, keep going with these and expand on them. So, these are, these are really big community policing initiatives that really permeates our agency all the way through patrol. Third year goals, crime prevention liaison, neighborhood watch, public housing liaison, homeless outreach, faith-based organizations. I want to go back to that real quick. Some of the things we really want to do is, and we've been working on this, have a liaison with public housing, that would be our, our crime watch officer. We want to kind of integrate a little more of faith-based organizations, start talking about issues in the community, wanting them to be homeless, crime prevention, neighborhood watch, we keep expanding these programs. This is very interesting, the six pillars of community policing really recommended by President Obama's Twenty-First Century Policing Task Force, and have some notes on that. When we looked at them, there's really six pillars that they talk about in this plan. Build trust and legitimacy, policy and oversight, technology and social media, community policing and crime reduction, officer training and education, officer safety and wellness, we do them all. We do every one of these, and we have been doing every one of these for the longest time, especially community policing, that was really started by, by Mark when he was police chief. So, they don't have anything on us. So we incorporate it into our plan because they are good pillars to follow in our profession. So, six engagement meetings, goal two is infrastructure, this is just more stuff that, more logistical for us, Tarpon Springs Police Department will conduct, and continuous review of technology needs, maintain, update, list of priorities, seek expanded digital storage capability. This is back second year accomplishments, just rolling through these. We've, we've already done our storage community, we constantly look for things, report writing, storage, that kind of building is getting a little old, although it's a phenomenal facility, but we're kind of starting to look for added spaces we can kind of store stuff and do stuff in. We're kind of looking for extra storage on hurricane supplies, we work on all that, it's a continual process. Third year goals, continue with IT department reviewing technology needs, prioritizing these, developing, updating priorities, I know I'm going fast. One of the, one of the biggest things we did, we, we merged our IT division with the city, because they do a phenomenal job, I work very closely with their director, and they do a phenomenal job. And then the other side of our departments partnered with Pinellas County SO for our CAD and RMS system, and they do a phenomenal job. So our technology is really good, really, really good, got some good people working on it. Continued storage committee, that's just, we talked about that. Video, this is more audio service, more technical stuff for our property and evidence room that will get achieved this year. This stuff's in process right now, two-way computer communication tech division. Goal three, staffing, staff development. Tarpon Springs Police Department continue efficiency staffing service, seek organizational structure analysis, on and on, develop wellness. Second year accomplishments, we've added a new sworn position in the last fiscal year, which is really good. All in patrol, we're putting this all on the line level, this is where these people are going. We also talk about command structure, police training, reclass is going to come up later in the SRO agenda where we really need a corporal, will be an upgrade of an officer position to run that fourth shift with the sergeant. This is a big area, recruiting personnel. We have done a great job in recruitment currently, when I get to our agenda item down the line about SROs and, and, you know, us attempting to add two officers to the department, we already have three officers waiting in the wings from other agencies wanting to come here. So, I'm really, really proud of that. Continue to send officers, Christ Intervention Team, this is, this is one of the big things, about thirty percent of our department's been through it, it's a forty-hour class, really how to work and engage with mentally ill people. Our goal is to get every officer through this, logistically, it's really hard because of forty-hour class, it's a week long, but we, we keep plugging along, we already got thirty percent of the officers through this. During your reply for one grant, we're not a warrior, we're always looking for grants. We've identified three members to assist with grants, we're actually training more people to help augment, you know, Major Young and help do this, so we're sending them to school. And we've hired, like I talked about, we've trained, we have a trained crime analyst working for the PD, it's a really critical position. We've also partnered with the PBA to have life scan physical assessments, that's one of the things the city manager and myself were pretty adamant about, the officers have to be healthy, they need to go through these, you know, pretty intense physicals every year because of what we do. We placed officers on voluntary five-year rotation, sixty-four slice heart scan, this is a major heart scan out of Tampa, thermocardiologist, that really is not very costly, but, you know, our officers definitely need to go through this because of the heart and lung bill. Selecting officer, ten excellent force fitness instructor course, again, starting to get into wellness, voluntary fitness, but a lot of these wellness programs have to be negotiated with the PBA, but a lot of it we're doing voluntarily by, you know, we really have a culture that we want people to be fit, you know, especially because of the challenges that they have to do physically out there. Third year goals, review structure of department on an annual basis, we always do that, we continue life scan, we have it in a union contract, continue research and implement a physical fitness program on a volunteer basis, Major Trow back there was one of the big ones. With that, we have a whole new gym that we basically institute, so we continue to push that. Continue to deduct annual evaluation, department staffing levels, our schools, this one's coming up, obviously another agenda item down the line, but we all know about the Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School Public Safety Act passed by the legislature, we'll be talking about that a little more later. Keep going with third year goals, grant opportunities, we know they're big, we're going to keep looking for them out there, especially the DOJ grants that basically give you officers. So we're, you know, our radar is definitely up on those. Maintain our current recruitment duties, review funding, sponsor candidates through academy. A lot of times with this, you're looking for younger officers that want to do their career here, they're an exceptional candidate, and you hire them on a three-year contract to go through the academy. Continue to train more officers in critical, I talked about sit team, our goal is to get the whole department through that over time. And again, we've partnered with Pinellas County Sheriff's Department, all the other police chiefs. This law that, that we'll be talking about a little later has a lot of other components to them, some are pretty complex, especially on the Baker Act and the Ricks Protection Act, because Pinellas County Sheriff's Department is doing all of this legally, and they're not charging us. It's phenomenal. Sheriff really stepped up on that one. That's basically where you could take a gun away from someone that's a danger to others, but it's a civil process, you actually got to sue them to get it. Third year goals, begin to implement, train all officers on Narcan nasal spray, this is because of the opioid crisis, some fentanyl, some dangerous stuff out there, we have to protect our officers. That's the next drug crisis in the country that's going on right now, and these things all run in cycles, and it's very frustrating, but it's out there. Pinellas County is the number one, two county in the whole state of Florida for opioid overdoses right now, we're number two. So basically, this just helps officers that they're exposed, and Narcan helps counteract the effects of fentanyl and some of these other drugs. And that's pretty much it, I'll take any questions that you have, and I appreciate you listening to our, updating our strategic plan.
Thank you, thank you for the update. Formally, some questions for you. And first, I am very glad that the police department has been increased, the strengths have been increased this year, and you included the recruitment, retention of personnel, and crime analysis by getting that specialized person. But we continue to have concern of losing variance officers through the attrition. How are you going to prepare yourself for that?
The biggest thing you could do is, is recruitment and training, you know, and keep your people. You really got to look at it from a holistic point of view, you have to have a positive culture with good pay, with good training, with good benefits that keep officers here, because if you start losing the other agencies and people retiring, that's a double whammy, I mean, that's going to hit you hard. But the biggest thing for us is to keep our people, retain people, and have a very strong pipeline with people that we can hire, especially experienced officers, because you can roll them through our field training program in an accelerated manner quicker than you could somebody that's novice. So really, that's our goal. This, Mayor, this tiger wave is upon us, it's not just us, it's everywhere, it's City Hall, it's, you know, organizations, you're going to see a lot of retirements over the next five years, and there's going to be this huge gap, and everybody's facing it, it's going to be a major challenge. I don't have, you know, any clear answer for you as to how we're going to face that challenge, as we're going to have to face it, and some of the things we're doing here is kind of gearing us for it, but it's definitely going to be an impact, and there's no doubt about it.
It's everywhere. Another question I have is, your number one goal is to maintain and to enhance community services and partnerships, and of course, I like that, and I'm supporting that very much. Can you explain to us how you're going to achieve that goal?
Well, the biggest thing is community policing in your culture, and you run it through the shifts. Basically, you, your officers are trained not only to go out there and take calls, but to work with the community, do foot patrol, problem solve, engage with people, engage with businesses, we even have officers going to our crime watch groups, you know, and engaging with them, so we're very active with that, so that's how you do that.
And also, you're checking some of the businesses when they're closed, right?
Absolutely, that's called our Night Guys program.
Yeah.
That's been in existence for many decades, it was actually started by Marco Coros.
The way, it's, we're getting a lot of good input about that.
Absolutely.
The last one is, how are we doing with the homeless outreach program, which is very, very effective?
I think the officer, I think the officer's the right pick for the job, I think he's got a learning curve, but we've had placements, he knows what he needs to do, it's a little different approach from Jose, but I'm very confident that he would do a really good job and keep getting placements and getting homeless people off the streets and into programs that can help them.
We've been able to help a lot of people lately, or?
Well, I think, I think our number's around three hundred and fifty over three and a half years that were actually taken off the streets and into programs that can help them. That's a pretty good accomplishment. A lot of that was with the former officer, though. So, and it takes time, it's something that takes time.
Thank you, and please thank all the officers from me.
Thank you, Mayor.
Are there any public, any commission comment? Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you. I don't, I don't have any questions, just, I want to thank you all for what you do, I would put you all up against any agency in Florida. I think we have the best police department, what you all balance as far as the workload of a, of a normal department, the advancement in IT infrastructure, and the political climate in which you all face that's outside the purview of this board, I don't envy that, and you all face it very well, like you said, many of these things that come down the pipeline, you all have already done, and I appreciate that. So thank you for all that you do, and I look forward to, well, I actually won't, won't, won't be on the board, you're going to get your next plan, but I'm sure it'll be well, so thank, thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Commissioner Seaver.
Yes, thank you for the presentation. I think you guys are being proactive already with your retention and your proactive ability to recruit, so I appreciate that.
Very important.
As you said, you're coming into a crisis in a few years, so, you know, I'm glad you are proactive, and thank you for your presentation and all you do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gickman?
Thank you. Chief, I want to thank you for the presentation and the update for all of us. I know personnel retention is real important to everybody, you know, within the city here, if it's not City Hall, especially with the police department. It costs a lot of money to train somebody and to keep them on your staff. It's just, it's, it's an ongoing issue in, in any company, actually, any, but I don't think we have a real big, we, we had a problem for a while with turnover and whatnot, but I know we've relooked at pay scales and we're not more, we're not known more as a training ground as we used to be, is that correct?
Absolutely not.
Okay, well, that's good, that's a great accomplishment.
I'm really proud of that, that we are, yeah, we're a destination.
It's pretty much twofold. First of all, you as commissioners, in the contracts you gave, has allowed us to be competitive. I mean, it starts with you to give that, then it goes to him to make sure he's got an agency and an operating agency that the people want to stay at and not leave to. So, it's really two phases, you've done your part, homeless planning, so we can stay competitive with other agencies, allow money for training, allow that money in the budget, and him as chief has carried it out to make the people not want to go because they find out and hear from others that the grass isn't greener on the other side. So, it's a twofold that you're a part of and they're a part of, to change the tremendous attrition we were having, the problems we're having in the past, and, you know, we don't have those now, and we just got to keep up.
Thank you, we have, need to work as a team, and if there's anything, you know, your department needs, you know, and you will come and ask us.
We'll ask, trust me.
But also, the homeless outreach program that you have has really come a long way, especially when Officer Ugalis was here with us, he worked so hard, and, and it will be a learning curve for, for the new officer, because he's got to learn who's out there on the streets and stuff, and...
And you got to network and gain their trust, and that takes time, that's the biggie right there.
Yeah, so, and, you know, I speak with Jose occasionally, and I think he, he, you know, you know, he'd help you in any way he could as well, he's awesome guy, he did a great job with that program, so hopefully we can continue and continue with that. But I do want to make sure that you do continue with the, the police officer, the coffee with the police officer, I forget what the program.
The ones we do at McDonald's.
Yeah.
That's all shift-driven, I love it.
Yeah.
We don't dictate that, they do it, I love it.
And the community loves it.
Absolutely.
I hear a lot about it, the community loves it, you know, I think some of the officers go to HOA meetings and whatnot, so like I said, the, the community really appreciates all that they do, so again, keep up the great work, and you have a great team, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
DeClara?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, thanks for the presentation and update, there's a lot of information you went through, and thanks for doing it timely. One thing I want to, a couple of things I want to touch on is the grants, thanks for applying for the grant, sorry when you receive it. I'd like to encourage all departments, when we have the opportunity to apply for grants and money to be brought in from the state or federal level, to continue to do that. And it's also encouraging to see that we're doing continuing education still with mental health, with, I know we've had some instances here locally, that's encouraging to see as well. I did have an opportunity to meet with Jacob, or Officer Hollinsworth, Major Young, and one of the sergeants to talk about the homeless outreaches, and I was encouraged about all the aspects and all the things that Jacob does, or Officer Hollinsworth does, on a daily basis, there is a lot that he does that I think a lot of us aren't aware of, and your department as a whole, and how they handle the homeless. So also, just want to say, thanks again for the update and all your hard work, I think you guys are doing a great job right now.
Thank you, thank you very much, Commissioner.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item?
I just wanted to make a comment about what the chief said about our partnership with faith-based organizations. Mount Hermon Baptist Church received a, a grant from JWB a few months ago. The grant was, was a grant that was focused on curbing crime in a, in a community with the emphasis on vehicle theft, that there's young children throughout Pinellas County, Hillsborough County, have been stealing cars, and that's enough. We've lost some, some, some lives throughout the county over the last couple of years of teenagers because of that. And so, this grant was received, and, and part of the grant was to partnership with agencies and businesses, and Dobie's Funeral Home is one of the Tarpon Springs Police Department, JWB, as well as a couple of other organizations, partnership with Mount Hermon and Pastor Willie Edwards. And I just want to thank the chief, his officers, and everything for partnering with Mount Hermon, it was a great program, attended about over three hundred children in the, in the community, a lot of presentations, and, and some gifts was given out to the kids, and, and this, that's the type of environment that it takes that community police, policing that's being visible and, and, and actually doing things in the community, so I just want to say that was a great program, it was just held on March twenty-fourth, and we're looking forward to applying for that again next year and making it, from what I've heard, I wasn't there during the whole program, what Pastor Edwards told me, that some of the comments from the police officers, they want to make it bigger and better next year. So, they're doing the work, so we appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Any other, any other public comments? Please come to the, to the podium. Please state your name and your address for the record.
Joel Lynn Wright, I'm with the Co-Link Foundation at eight seventy-one East Klosterman Road, and my question's for the chief, I want to know if we have things in place to help with stress release for the officers, if they're able to go to yoga class, or massage, or just things to help them... if they're able to go to yoga class or massage or just things to help them de-stress from their stressful lives.
Well, the first one that's gonna need is the chief. Um, but we, um, we do, um, you know, culture is the big important thing, supporting your officers. Um, you know, yes, we, we have all that stuff in place. I, I think the biggest thing is culture and, and being there to support your officers. Knowing, them knowing that you're there for them and you're there to support them is big in any organization. So we, we have all that stuff in place.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments on this item? Yannan, thank you very much, Chief. We are now going to the consent agenda. Item number four is special events. A solstice on Sponge Ducks on May twenty-sixth, two thousand eighteen. B is Opa Palusa, June eighth through tenth, two thousand eighteen. Number five is the extended bid number thirteen zero zero forty-nine. B TK wastewater treatment plant, SCADA system, programming, preventive maintenance and repair. Number six is to approve correction of, uh, errors on March third, two thousand eighteen. BOC agenda item for, uh, file number fourteen zero zero fifty-nine, CJJ, landscape contracted services. Number seven is the award file number eighteen zero zero seventy-three, NRS wastewater treatment plan. Tank cleaning through, uh, the seat of Tallahassee contract number thirty-nine fifty-nine. Number eight is the award bid, number eighteen zero zero eighty-four, BRS curing place pipeline rehabilitation. And number nine is to renew file number eighteen zero zero twenty-seven, CRS, police equipment surveillance, IT supplies and related items through purchasing cooperative of American contract number RFP three dash one forty dash sixteen. Number ten is the award file, number eighteen zero zero ninety-five, NRS, single source purchase of Robert Flapper check valve for the, uh, auto facility. Number eleven is the increase file number seventeen zero zero twenty-five, NRS, enterprise license agreement for the G's software. And number twelve is to approve extension of file numbers eleven zero zero seven six, PTK, debris monitor services. Are there any items that you like to pull? Commissioner Carr?
Yeah, I like to pull number eight just to highlight it and discuss.
Pull number eight?
Yes.
Are there any, uh, any comments on those items, four through, uh, twelve, with the exception of eight? Are there any public comments on those items? I need a motion on items four through eleven, with the exception of eight.
Motion to approve.
Second.
In roll call, please.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Mayor LaHuzas?
Yes. We are now going to address item number eight. Go ahead, Commissioner Carr.
Thank you. Uh, I asked, uh, Mr. Smith to, to highlight this a little bit more. I think it's an important, uh, part of our city. Our sewer and water infrastructure is a, a big asset and a big, um, area that we need to make sure that it's gonna continue to work well. Um, this here in place, I'm gonna ask Mr. Smith to go over a little bit more in detail. Um, and this technique is really saving the city a ton of money and how we're able to, uh, use our current infrastructure and improve it. So I'd like just Mr. Smith to touch base in this, uh, for a couple of minutes, if you could, please, about what the actual product is.
Thank you. Paul Smith, Public Services Director. And this item here has to do with basically putting a new surface on the inside of the, particularly the sewer pipes. Over time, the surface can be cracked and tend to either leak inward from the ground or outward. And, uh, this compromises the performance of the sewer system. If you could imagine, we have a limited treatment capacity. If you're suddenly pouring groundwater or surface water into that pipe, now you're treating water that you really shouldn't have to treat. So this lining process is a very cost-effective way to add and restore a lining on the inside of the pipe. Typically, what it involves is a material, a composite material, almost looks like a fabric. And they're able to pull that through the pipe in a folded configuration. They fold it into a U shape and pull it through the pipe. Then they apply hot water to it, which makes it expand to the surface on the inside of the pipe and harden up so that you get basically a new surface on the inside without digging a lot of trenches to dig pipe up and, uh, disturbing the overlying roadways and properties nearby. So it really avoids, it's a very effective tool to avoid all of those types of, uh, impacts while still meeting the goal.
Just wanna touch base on a couple of things. This is a twofold, um, positive, I think. They're not tearing up the sewer lines and creating a mess in everyone's front yards and where these are going. And also, it's a savings, like you said, something around a hundred dollars per square foot if they're to rip it out and reinstall the lines, right?
Yeah, it depends on what's over the top. It can be more like two hundred dollars per foot to replace a sewer pipe down a main roadway or something like that.
So with this item, with the amount of feet that's being proposed here, it's about eighty thousand plus. And if they were to tear it up as a traditional aspect, it would be four hundred and plus thousand dollars. So I just wanna bring this up, and I think Mr. Smith is doing a great job for our city in looking at innovative ways to save money. Um, and I just wanna highlight this and say thank you to Mr. Smith for bringing this up to us and finding alternatives to, um, creating our, or extending our life of our infrastructure that we have and, and saving money. So thank you for all you're doing.
Well, on behalf of the department, uh, we thank you for recognizing that. And I'll say, just like Chief Coach, and it's our staff that does this. And, uh, we really have great staff that come up with these ideas and, and work with procurement to get good bids for us.
Great. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any commission comments, questions? Are there any public comments on this item? Need a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
In roll call for item number eight.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber? Vice Mayor Banther? Mayor LaHuzas?
Yes, thank you. And we're now going to the special consent agenda. Item number thirteen is the award file number eighteen zero zero ninety-one, BRS generator maintenance staff report. Mr. Licorice.
Should've stayed up there.
Good evening. Paul Smith, Public Services Director. We're asking you to award a contract here for the maintenance of our generators citywide. This includes both the standalone generators that protect buildings and facilities and also the portable generators that are deployed out in the field, particularly during emergencies. Um, this contract includes the main lift stations as well as the critical city facilities, including the fire departments and the police and emergency building over there. Um, the portable generators, from our, uh, experiences with Irma last year, you all supported us getting some additional portable generators. So this contract also protects those pieces of equipment to make sure that they work when we need them the most. Um, this recommendation's the low bidder. This is also a bidder that we've worked with before. Procurement was able to get a really good response, several different bidders, and this price is, is much better than the rest of them. And, um, I will say, as usual, our staff is looking at this contract to provide as many services as we might need, but we'll only be charging those that we really do need. In other words, if we can perform some of these things in-house, we will. But we wanna have this mechanism in place so that things are maintained, uh, to function when we need them.
Well, thank you, Mr. Smith. Uh, from the hurricane, what lessons we learned? How many generators do we have and how many we should have in order to be efficient? Can you tell us that?
Yes, well, we have a total of fifty-nine lift stations throughout the city. And when the power outage happened, we had fifty-four of them without power. Uh, when I first got that news, I thought somebody was telling me a bad joke, but that was really what was going on. We were able to cover it with the existing facilities we have, but also we were, uh, very dedicated staff dragging, uh, portable generators around in multiple shifts, twenty-four hours a day for over, I think, a week. But we were able to do that without any major malfunctions. So to answer your question now, we'll have the, um, fifteen additional generators that we've purchased. We've got the, uh, fixed ones as well. So we've got nearly half of the lift stations covered with generators. I really wouldn't recommend that we put a generator on every single lift station at this point just because some of them have a lot more storage time than others. It gives us some flexibility to go around. Besides, when you add fifty-nine generators around the city, that's, this maintenance basically doubles. So I think we're getting very close to where we need to be, and we can make up the difference with the portable generators that we've gotten. We'll continue to look at it, though, and if there's some things we recommend, we'll be bringing it to you for consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you.
Are there any commission comments, questions? Are there any public comments on this item? Yannan, roll call, please.
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call?
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Mayor LaHuzas?
Yes, thank you. Next is item number fourteen is to authorize staff to proceed with the emergency operations equipment purchase recommendation. Mr. Licorice?
Again, we told you after the last storm, um, and you gave us direction that, you know, the lessons you learned, we need to go out and, and get what we need. And this is the list that's been put together by, by police, fire, staff, IT, um, which identified what we were deficient with in the last storm and what we need to do to move forward. Um, the only change that we have in there is, uh, when we brought it to you beginning, you know, many months ago and said we're gonna look at it, um, we didn't have the money for the dredge. Having the money for the dredge has freed up penny money. So if you see at the end what has changed, whereas we had thought we'd have to do most of this out of reserve money, two hundred and sixty-five thousand of it will come out of penny for Pinellas and only thirty-seven will come for reserve. And that's mainly for barricades and stuff that you can't buy the penny money from. So besides getting all the equipment that you, you told us as a commission, um, to be ready for the next storm and get what we needed, um, again, something that's happened from that dredge money coming in, besides doing that, is freeing up the money. So the penny money can supply the majority of the money for this equipment. And by getting it now and you approving it now, we should be, have it all ordered and ready for this hurricane season. And Chief, or anybody's here to ask specific equipment and stuff they've asked for, if you have any questions on any specifics of the equipment or anything.
Mr. Licorice, I don't have any questions, but I just wanna comment that's money well spent.
Yes, absolutely.
Commissioner Kikta?
I just have a question. Um, we have, it's been mentioned numerous times about our radio station or the emergency station that we have. It's out. Yeah, is it anchored or wherever? It's that way out. Does that need to be upgraded?
Uh, the chief, the fire chief is still looking at that. We're looking at different options for that of what we need.
So it could reach all our residents.
So that may, that may, that may come a little later.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, Mayor? Vice Mayor?
Yes, um, Mark, I know you talked about some comforts in the EOC, like we, we lack freezer space and that kinda stuff. Is that gonna be included or is that down the line or?
We're still looking at options. We're hoping to get some ideas from the hurricane conference coming up. There, there's not really, I looked at a lot of the options. Um, Chief Young, um, there's really not good with the way our building is with tilt building, the way it's constructed to attach it, there's problems and that creates problems for, but we're hoping to learn some information or some other maybe alternative methods to do that. And we're hoping to get some of that information from the upcoming hurricane conference. So that may come at a later time.
Okay, 'cause I, I know, I know food was the biggest one on this, so we need to make sure there's food and there's freezer space. So I hope you would come back to us with some of that.
Well, I know that, um, they utilize the Elks Lodge quite a bit. And now the Elks had applied for grant money and they've got, you know, new kitchen facility and they, the grant money for painting on the outside and all that. But also, some of that grant money went to, um, freezers. So we have more freezers there as well. So they've always been, uh, partnered with the city when it came to emergency use. So, um, you know, just keep that in mind, too.
That is part of Chief Young's consideration, as he's looking at that aspect of it.
Mr. Licorice, just something I just remember. And, uh, all these things that you recommend, I think it's gonna, it's a great thing of going to improve our, uh, our systems. But we still had a problem to communicate with the, uh, with the residents, uh, what, you know, they should do because they lose power and all that stuff. Do you have any ideas how can we communicate with the, with the residents?
That's pretty difficult during those times when everything's out. It's a difficult problem and question to solve. So we don't have any answers to that as of right now.
And what Commissioner Kikta said, that's something that we discussed once before about the radio station. If we recommend the residents to have a radio with a battery operator because we need to, uh, you know, inform the other residents, let them know what's next and what to expect and what they should do.
Yes, Chief Young's still looking at that, yes.
Thank you. Any other comments? Are there any public comments on this item?
Mayor, I've got one question real quick.
Sure, go ahead.
Chief, I was looking at the, these message boards for traffic control. Um, this is something I've asked about in the past about equipment that we buy versus renting versus buying. And I, I would imagine if there's a hurricane coming, we're probably not wanting to run down the street and try to rent from Hertz or anything along those lines, so.
Not gonna happen.
It's worth it to, to drop the.
I'll, I'll be quick on this. What, you know, that, that thing, that thing was a category five rolling through the Caribbean. We were lucky because it went inland and we got impacted and it was bad, but it was not near as bad as it could have been. One of our biggest challenges was nineteen. When the power went out, every intersection was not functioning. To staff an intersection in September or August is four officers, an officer at nineteen and Tarpon Avenue, one hour. You gotta replace them. So think about the logistics of that. We were lucky because that power came back quick. Pinellas County was struggling. So these signs are, are an overall part of a bigger plan for traffic coordination. We've worked all this out. It was a lesson learned, but these are essential, these signs.
Okay.
Because we're gonna need those officers elsewhere if things were really bad.
Also, I wanna say thanks to, uh, the city manager and, uh, police chief on this. This is something that we asked for right after the hurricane to, uh, come back and let us know what we can improve on. And thank you for putting a plan together and asking for these. So thanks for, thank you.
Any public comments on this item? Yannan? I need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Mayor LaHuzas?
Yes, thank you. And we're now going to the audience of resolutions. Item number fifteen, it's a resolution two thousand eighteen dash zero three. It's the application eighteen dash twelve, rent back investment, conditional use for single-family home in a T four C. This is a quasi-judicial. The city attorney will read the, uh, title and will explain the quasi-judicial process.
Heather, you gonna present these together?
I would suggest that we do that.
We have three of those.
We have two.
Two.
We have two.
Two?
Yeah, fifteen and sixteen.
For what, seventeen?
Not quasi-judicial.
Okay.
All right, item fifteen is resolution twenty eighteen dash zero three, a resolution of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, approving application number eighteen dash twelve, requesting a conditional use permit to allow construction of one single-family residence on Lot Four, Riverview subdivision, located on the south side of East Spruce Street between North Pinellas Avenue and North Safford Avenue in the T four C district of the special area plan, providing for findings, providing for conditions and providing for an effective date. Resolution twenty eighteen dash zero three by title only. Item sixteen is resolution twenty eighteen dash zero four, a resolution of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, approving application number eighteen dash thirteen, requesting a conditional use permit to allow construction of one single-family residence on Lot Three, Riverview subdivision, located on the south side of East Spruce Street between North Pinellas Avenue and North Safford Avenue in the T four dis, T four C district of the special area plan, providing for findings, providing for conditions and providing for an effective date. As a reminder to the commission, uh, planning staff is going to present these items together. We will need separate motions and votes on both. These items are quasi-judicial proceedings where the commission acts in a quasi-judicial rather than a legislative capacity. At such a hearing, it's not the commission's function to make law, but rather to apply law that has already been established. In such a hearing, the commission is required by law to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented and apply those findings to previously established criteria contained in the code in order to make a legal decision regarding the application. The commission may only consider evidence at this hearing that the law considers competent, substantial and relevant. If that evidence demonstrates that the applicant has met the criteria established by the code, then the commission is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. If the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence demonstrate the applicant has failed to meet the criteria, then the commission is required by law to find against the applicant. All witnesses must give their testimony under oath. All persons testifying must give their name and address for the record. All testimony and questioning must address matters that are relevant and material to the issues under consideration. City staff will present its testimony and evidence first. The applicant will then have an opportunity to cross-examine city staff. The applicant will then present its testimony and witnesses. City staff will have an opportunity to cross-examine the applicant. Members of the public opposing the application will then be given an opportunity to comment. After all members of the public speaking in opposition have concluded, members of the public in support of the application will have an opportunity to comment. Each member of the public is limited to four minutes. The applicant will then have an opportunity to make closing argument or summary, after which city staff will be given an opportunity to make a closing argument or summary. Following this, the commission will consider the matter. A motion will be made and a vote will be taken. At this point, I would ask for the commission to please disclose any expertise communications on these applications. Seeing none, I ask for anyone who plans to testify tonight to please stand and be sworn. Is the applicant here, Heather?
Yep.
Sir, could I ask you to raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm the testimony that you're about to give in this proceeding is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, Heather.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Heather Earl are planning and zoning director and staff for these applications. These are essentially two adjacent lots along Spruce Street that, at this time, the applicant has requested to build two single family residential units. The reason why they are required to do a conditional use is because they're located in your special area plan. In your special area plan, this particular character district requires that any resident, new residential uses going in go through the conditional use process so that we can determine whether or not they're consistent with the, incompatible with the neighborhood. And in this particular case, this is a developing area along Spruce Street, so they are in fact compatible with the neighborhood, and that's been found through the application of your review criteria. With that, we can go through the individual review criteria, but the, the applications are in fact consistent. We have planned services available in the area and we, there are no significant resources that is gonna impact and you, it's not gonna impact your facilities in a negative way. So as a result, staff is recommending approval with one condition. The conditional use will expire within one year of approval if the building permit is not issued on either of these two properties, since it's the same condition for both. The planning and zoning board heard both of these applications at the March nineteenth meeting. There was no public opposition or comment, and the board unanimously voted to recommend approval. With that, I can answer any particular questions you have on these.
Just for clarity of the record, Heather, your presentation is applicable to both parcels?
Correct.
Is there any material distinction between them that would change the criteria having been met?
No, there's not.
Thank you.
Heather, I have one question to ask you. Being that this is a special area plan, can the owner convert this property to commercial later if he wants?
That's correct. The, while they're being developed as residential now, you know that that special area plan allows for a mixture of uses. So once these buildings are constructed, they can be converted through the change of use process to a commercial building. There may be required, requirement of additional parking or some other modifications that have to happen at that time, but it's not uncommon. It's happened throughout the district, so.
And you see that as a comparable to the area?
That is correct.
Any other questions for staff? Does the applicant wish to present to commission tonight? Not required to. Other members of the public wishing to speak in opposition to the application? Seeing none, members of the public wishing to speak in support? Anything in closing?
Not at this time.
Mr. Mayor, first we'll be seeking a motion on item fifteen and then on sixteen.
Thank you. Need a motion for the resolution two thousand eighteen dash zero three?
Motion approved.
Second.
Are there any commission comments or questions? Roll call please.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Mayor Alhuzis.
Yes. Now need a motion for the resolution two thousand eighteen dash zero four?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any commission comments? Roll call please.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Mayor Alhuzis.
Yes, thank you. We're now going to the item number seventeen, which is resolution two thousand eighteen dash zero nine, the application seventeen dash zero one, an extension of site plan one rush number three. Mr. Attorney, please read the resolution.
Resolution twenty eighteen dash zero nine, a resolution of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, approving application number seventeen dash zero one for site plan approval for ten new condominium units in the Windrush North Three complex located on Windrush Loop, providing for findings, providing for a certificate of concurrency, providing for conditions, and providing an effective date. Resolution twenty eighteen dash zero nine by title only.
Yeah, essentially, this is just a one-year extension. Windrush, this project came before you last year, and due to Hurricane Irma and some other obstacles, they've been unable to secure enough pre-sales to go forward with the actual construction of the project. So they came in and asked us if there was any way they, they could ask for a one-year extension. The staff is supporting this one-year extension. However, we did have it reviewed by the technical review team, and there has been one additional condition. The other conditions are the same as were in the previous resolution, but I'm gonna go ahead and read all of them into the record. And the final condition is the, the revised condition that was added, or was added into here. Actually, there's two. We, we added, modified the last condition to give an actual specific date for when it would actually expire. But I'll read these into the record. Developers are responsible for acquiring all other jurisdictional permits or approvals and for meeting the minimum criteria of the land development code, including compliance with Article XV, double, X, two, one, one, sorry. Public art program, the applicant must mitigate for any tree removal at the time of the, of permitting pursuant to LDC section one three three point zero six. Water and sewer infrastructure shall be privately owned and maintained. Construction plans shall be consistent with the approved site plan, and the payment of all requisite fees attended to the project shall be paid in accordance with the land development code. Applicant must demonstrate that lighting is unobtrusive to adjacent property owners. The new condition is the project shall be master meter, a master meter community and shall install a master meter assembly. If fire suppression is required, it must be configured, configured such that the potable water can be turned off to provide for non-payment. And then the other seventh condition that is a revised condition as well. The site plan shall expire on April seventeenth, two thousand nineteen if a building permit application has not been submitted. With that, I can answer any other questions you have, but there have been no other material changes.
Thank you. Do we have any idea where this property will develop?
They have not submitted a building permit at this point. They have, they have, as of this, if you were to approve this, they would have an additional year to submit their application. But I cannot answer that because this is now the second evaluation of this project, and the third time it's been before you.
Any commission comments, questions? Commissioner K.
Thank you. Heather, can, can we put a stipulation that, I mean, they can only, we can only extend and this will be a last extension or?
Well, this is the only extension they can get. Your, your land development code only allows the BOC to provide one extension. Now, that doesn't stop them from coming back again with the same application and coming back through the site planning process. Should they not be successful in getting the, going through the building permit process this time?
They have to go through the whole process.
Yeah, but they would have to go through. That's what happened last year, was they, they missed the extension timeframe, so as a result, they had to come back through the full process.
Thank you.
I've got one question, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Why, three years is ringing like as, in my head for some reason. Don't a lot of these have three years to fulfill or is it mostly one year for the site plan?
In site plans, it's only a single year, and, but the, the burden of proof is different. They just have to get the building, they have to submit for the building permit. They don't actually have to have completed the process in that one year. So it just, it, it allows them some additional time, once they've submitted in, as long as they hit that one-year mark for actually submitting the application, where the other applications that we have for land use all require them to obtain, obtain the building permit within the two-year or the three-year timeframe. So there's a little different in, in the language there based on the applications.
And I must, just for clarification, those are set up timeframes in the event that the code changes for other regulations and then that needs to be re-reviewed again, right?
Correct. Yeah, those are in your, basically for the, based on the application type. So in this case, a site plan has that one-year type regardless.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is the applicant here today? Would you please come and tell us what plans that you have with this development?
Good evening. My name is David DeBau. I'm here representing the owner who's celebrating his birthday. But I have knowledge about the property. The plan is originally, and I can, I can digress and give you kind of the timeframe of what's occurred over the last couple of years. Initially, we came in with a site plan for units that were gonna be significantly larger and laid out differently. And during the time that we went through the process of approval, we determined that that was not a product that would be accepted by the market. So when we came back, we resubmitted with a smaller footprint and units that are similar in size to the units that are existing in Windrush right now. During the course of the year, we had a hurricane and some other issues with, with the bank that prevented us from getting the pre-sales that were required in order to move forward with the project. And with the timeframe getting short, we came back and asked for an additional year extension.
Thank you very much. Anyone has any questions for the applicant? Thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Are there any public comments on this item? You hear none? I need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
You're roll call please.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Mayor Alhuzis.
Yes, thank you. Item number eighteen is the ordinance two thousand eighteen dash zero seven, the application eighteen dash thirty. City of Tarpon Springs, comprehensive plan, future land use, the custom element. This is the first reading. Mr. Attorney, if you read the ordinance.
Ordinance two thousand eighteen dash zero seven, an ordinance of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending the future land use element of the comprehensive plan by revising section three. Existing land use data requirements, adding sub-paragraph six, relocating sub-paragraph H from section six, revising the goals, objectives, and policies by clarifying policies one point one point two and one point one point ten, adding a new goal two, providing a rationale for the future land use map, and moving the future land use categories from section six to goal two. Revising goal three to incorporate density and intensity standards in the coastal high hazard area to be consistent with the countywide rules. Renumbrating all subsequent goals, objectives, and policies, striking redundant sections, and renumbering the subsequent sections. To remove or correct outdated references, amending the coastal planning and conservation element by revising policy one point six point six. To modify the reference to the future land use element for preservation and conservation of environmentally sensitive areas and deleting policy one point six point seven. Providing for correction of Scrivener's errors, providing for other modifications that may arise from review of this ordinance, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. This is first reading of ordinance two thousand eighteen dash zero seven by title only. Second reading will be held following state review. It was published in the Tampa Bay Times by title on March two, twenty eighteen.
This is the last one, I promise. This one is really a housekeeping amendment. It's, it has two functions. One is to clean up a lot of the old references to state statutes that no longer exist or have been changed, and to take out the Rule nine J five mentioned all throughout our future land use element since it's no longer relevant. We've also needed to go through the plan and make sure that we are consistent with the countywide rules. We have until August of this year to do that, so we have done that. We've essentially adopted through the changes in the future land use categories that we went through in the last set of amendments for the year-based amendments, and now we're finishing up with just adding the coastal high hazard language that was required to be added. At this point, we should be completely consistent with the change in the, the countywide rules and meeting the deadline, far meeting the deadline that they've set forward for us to do that. With that, we've also went through and added some policy language to actually incorporate your land development, or you're, sorry, your future land use categories actually integrated into your policy language before it kind of was like on the edge and it didn't really mesh well. So we've kind of just reorganized it to have, give it some language and kind of give it an introduction so that people understand that those are future land use categories. We've also added to the resident, the resort future high residential category, which is if you remember the category that if you're gonna use the alternate temporary density standards and go through developer agreement for a hotel or that type of thing, you would utilize that section. We've added in commercial uses that are allowed under the countywide plan that we hadn't thought about in discussions with some of the hotel developers that have kind of expressed interest in utilizing that section. So we've added in retail uses and commercial uses, so you can have a restaurant associated with the hotel, or you can have retail associated with the hotel, which makes sense for some of these more resort-based hotels want that type of amenities. So those are the basics for why, why we're amending this and the language is being cleaned up to make sure that we're compliant with state law as well. And I can answer any questions you have with specific sections or those type of things.
Lot easier than doing the E O, right?
Yeah, this is a lot easier, but.
Any commission comment?
I just wanna thank you because I know how hard this has been and how much work it's been and that you've been proactive in thinking of all these uses with the hotel and, and, and commercial especially. So thanks for all your hard work, and I know how, you know, it's, it's taken a long time, so.
Yeah, I'm, I'm hoping that we will soon have a comp plan that at least we're in the right decade.
Right.
Shooting for that.
You're getting there.
Any other commission comments? Are there any public comments on this item? Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call please.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Mayor Alhuzis.
Yes, thank you. We're now going to the item number nineteen, which is the resolution two thousand eighteen dash zero six, police department reorganization, school resource officer program.
Resolution twenty eighteen dash zero six, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, authorizing changes in the police department organization and providing for an effective date hereof. Resolution twenty eighteen dash zero six by title only.
Let me go ahead and start on this. Obviously, we could spend a long time talking about how this came about, what happened. But, you know, we don't really have time for that. What we're dealing with tonight is what we have to do now. There'll be a lot more talks about this in the future, funding, you know, where it's gonna come from, a lot of things. All we knew when we saw this happening and we kind of figured we'd get stuck with something without the proper funding. We've been prepared for this. Luckily, we're ahead of the curve back twelve, thirteen years ago when I was talking to the school system about that we should have officers in the elementary school, and it's kind of looked like, like I was crazy. You know, we instituted an officer to rotate the three. So we're ahead of the curve tonight when we're asking to fulfill the law and cover the ones, cuz we've already had one working for a long time. And in reality, when you hear the chief talk, we're actually for the first time gonna get funding for that one. So that's gonna be a fifty-six thousand dollar plus that we didn't get before. But the essential thing is we have to have our officers in the school by August thirteenth, which means we gotta hire, we gotta train, and we gotta be ready. And we can do that with this tonight and what you've given us for the officers. So I'll have the chief go ahead and just talk a little bit about it, and there's also one, another housekeeping thing on the position that's added in there. We're gonna do this another time. We just put this one in here. It's not related, but I'll let you just do a fast version, cuz I think everybody here knows, you know, we need to have our officers in our elementary schools by August thirteenth.
Thank you, Mark. Yeah, I laid it out in the memo to you. I laid out the law, everything that's basically going on. We have to have them in there by July first. There's, there's at least a three or four week lag time where these officers go to the schools and, and start doing stuff before the school season starts. So this law basically requires either a deputy police officer, campus police officer, or school guardian to be in every elementary school, every middle school, every high school, and every charter school in the state of Florida, period. Whether we, whether we like, whether or not, well, we don't like it. Whether or not the legislature adequately funded this program, really, we gotta do this for the safety of the kids. So as the city manager said, we're in a really good position because we have one officer that covers all three. We're asking to increase our authorized strength by two officers. We already have people signing up. They wanna work in the schools, so basically we'll replace them on the road. I've already got officers in the pipeline that are probably watching you right now to see what you're gonna do on this vote, so we can get going on them. But as the city manager said, we're in a really good position here to do this. And as the city manager said, we're not happy with the funding, and that's something that Mark and I and the sheriff of Pinellas County and the police chiefs are really adamant with the school board that, you know, sixty percent funding is not cutting it. It's probably less when you start factoring next year relief factor. We have to have officers cover the schools if people are out sick, and it's a logistical thing. It's, it's, it's a lot of work. It's a lot of effort, but it is about safety of the kids. So the other housekeeping item is on a twelve-hour shift, which is in place per our union contract. We have one shift, we have four shifts, one working without a corporal. So we just simply upgrade an officer's position to a corporal position. It'll be a promotion for somebody. It's not gonna cost much on the budget, maybe three grand a year to do this. But they're getting paid some money anyway to do that when they have to act as sergeant. I laid out to you a spreadsheet that was pretty comprehensive on, on, you know, what our costs are gonna be this fiscal year. Our non-budgeted cost will be about forty-three thousand. I'll do the best I can to find that money in my budget. We think we can make it work. Obviously, next year will be a little different scenario, but Mark and I will go over that during the budgeting process, so that's pretty much it in a nutshell.
Well, thank you, and congratulations for being proactive. At least we have one officer already in place, and we have to add two more. And we will comply with the law and to provide safety for our students. There's no question about that. But again. But again, here we have the state that is mandating without providing the funding to go with it.
They provide partial.
Partial.
I mean, partial.
Yeah, very little. Thank you. And Mr. LeCure, you're going to start negotiations with Pinellas County Schools. Hopefully, we'll get some of the money faster.
Again, there's there's a lot we have to do on the negotiation front, but we need to do this now with the money committed. Oh, yes, there'll be a lot of talk in the next four or six months. There'll be a lot of talk about how and what needs to change about the funding for the fiscal for the school year after that.
And, you know, Mark, correct me if I'm wrong on this, but the school board superintendent told Mark and I that they're committed to this model right here for now. And like the mayor said, we are, we're going to go back and have some discussions.
Thank you. Commissioner Kikta?
Thank you. I just had one question about our middle school. Do we think, I mean, I'll take, you know, I'll I'll trust your advice, but is one SRO enough in our middle school? There's a lot of lot of things coming out of there, I'm hearing, and it's it's not good, the middle school. And I know it's more money and whatnot, but we can find the money.
Mark and I have always felt that we need two at the high school. We will not waver on that. The middle school is probably a discussion for another day because now you're talking about another officer. We have to do it at the elementary schools. Now you're talking about relief factor. You're talking about so much logistics going into it. At this point, we're comfortable with one. We're not seeing any trends that indicate we need more people at the middle school because, you know, he's got backup. He's got people right down the road. Patrol also helps out with this, so.
That's what I was going to ask. So if there's an issue at the middle school, somebody, you know, he'll call in for.
Patrol immediately.
So somebody from one of the other schools might would be able to come and help as well?
Can, and and we have patrol. Patrol actually walks through the schools. Major Trill has had them out of all the campuses. We know the way out to the camp, so patrol would be would be the first responder, and they're out there.
So it would be patrol first. Okay. Now, when you're talking about hiring, so we wouldn't move any of our current police officers into these positions? We would bring from the outside?
No, our current officers would be put.
So we're going to bring our current officers in and then hire new officers from the outside?
To replace them on the road, correct.
Okay, that make, yeah, that I like that because they're familiar with our schools and and.
Yeah, and and it's something that, you know, it's another avenue for our officers to do something. You know, again, you know, you know, they can, they can, you know, expand themselves and get into a school and do a different assignment. So but yeah, it would be your current officers.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Carr?
Thank you, Mayor. Something to touch about on Commissioner Kikta, too. I believe the middle school, correct me if I'm wrong, it's been a while since I've been to middle school. But I think there's only one entrance after the school starts at the middle school compared to the high school, how you can come in multiple directions.
I believe you're correct on that because they close that one gate. You have to come through the office. I believe you're correct on that.
I mean, it does create an extra protection, layer of protection with having only one way in and one way out.
Major Trill is is, he knows, we know all the outlays school, but he's saying yes.
Yeah, but when you have children that are hitting our teachers and beating up our teachers.
Yeah, no, I.
That's my concern. Unfortunately.
Yeah, it's it's not a great situation that we're in here, but thank you for being proactive. My question is pertaining mostly to the charter schools. I thought I read in here that we don't have any charter schools within the city.
That's correct.
What is, I I thought I recalled when I was in a planning and zoning board, looking at a charter school just south or just north of the hospital on Pinellas Avenue, across the street from the Shell Station. Does that ring a bell to anybody?
Oh, it Frank's building.
It's like the school of the wave or.
That was a special ed program.
Okay, special ed, so it's different?
Yeah.
So how does it, like, if we have, like, three charter schools moving in the city of Tarpon Springs, do we have to staff them? Is that, I mean.
That's something we're going to talk about with the school and stuff.
We have to talk about that.
If they start at, you know, there's going to have to be something looked at, and, you know, big issues of all types with charter schools. But one issue is going to be looked at is, you know, there's going to have to be some discussion with us or or whatever community it came in and what impact, and then how we're going to cover them. So that's another item that's going to be on the table for discussion within the next four to five months.
Absolutely.
Because there's lots of issue with charter school, and then if you start putting them and put that responsibility of more police on it, that needs to be an item for discussion.
Absolutely, and and we have to cover these schools when they're in session. So an SRO calls out sick, what gets put on F M L A, we have to cover the school. A lot of logistics with this.
So you figure one and a half officer per school?
I'm sorry?
Are you figuring out one and a half officer per school?
Well, we'll do one in each elementary school, one at the middle school, two at the high school.
Right, but when you figure it out, it's like one and a half because you're going to have the vacations and all that stuff, then, right?
Well, that's one way of looking at it, yeah. We have to really start looking at the relief factor, though.
Probably that might have topped ahead, maybe an officer and a four. But again, we we've got methods with patrol that we can handle with the system. And with adding these two officers, that same rotational system that we prepare for vacations, prepare for those things with backup, you know, we can, we can do that. That's been an effect, and we've done that to cover at times. We're capable, bare minimum, but we're still capable as long as we have those two people involved. But the relief factor, son, it definitely going to be on the table and definitely for future budgets, we'll be talking about again. But for this budget, this is what we need. But again, that's another item we'll be coming back to you probably talking about. And hopefully, we'll have the funding in place from from other people to bring that back to you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes, thank you. I think this is not another example, as we look back to your presentation, how we're being proactive. And I think we're doing something that's actually going to protect our children in schools, not empty resolutions or other things that I think are a waste of time. So I I want to thank you all for your work in this and being ahead of the game. And I know as funding is, maybe future funding comes up from the state, we will be active in that. I I do want you to always reconsider or never hesitate to ask, I should say, for a second officer at the middle school if needed, and we will trust your your judgment on that. And I also appreciate that. I know our officers won't stand down in the event of 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 an active shooter, so thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I have one other question. So in the summertime, when, what what are SROs do when school is out?
Well, logistically, we we request that they take their vacation times in the summer.
Okay.
So it's not during the school or during a school break. Other than that, they help, they they're assigned, major trial assigns them to day shift. So they're doing community policing stuff, they're working the road. So in a way, you know, we have extra people in the summer on the road, which which helps.
And usually, it'll be one school, though it's a summer school site, so we'll be, one of them will remain on whichever campus. They designate for the, so maybe one or two will be, so two of them will stay to go wherever that summer program is.
You probably assign training for the officers doing this.
Absolutely. All of our officers are trained, and, you know, we're going to run a good unit. We already have all our plans in place. Once you guys give us the green light, we're ready to roll.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item? Here none, I need a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
In raw call, please.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Mayor Alahuzis?
Yes, thank you.
Those officers watching call chief coach tomorrow for your job.
Thank you very much. We appreciate, yep, they're watching. We'll give them a call tomorrow.
Well, that concludes the regularization agenda, and we go to staff comments?
I I think I've been pretty talkative tonight, Mayor, so I have no comments.
Okay. City attorney?
No comments.
City manager?
Yes, we need to, if you remember, the May meeting, and so we didn't have three meetings in a row, our two regular meetings are the eighteen, are the eighth and the twenty-second. We need to have a special meeting. The bids on the piece of land on Tarpon Avenue, the empty piece of land are going to be coming in within the week. You as a commission are going to be the review process on those, which will be probably be presentations, question, discussion, and the decision. So obviously, that that whole process needs to be on a separate night. Since we've got five Tuesdays in in May, I would suggest the fifteenth. And want to check your schedule. Ultimately, if there's a problem with the fifteenth or something, we have the twenty-ninth. I suggest one of those empty Tuesday night meetings so we can have a special meeting just to deal with the presentations and your selection of 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 who may take that property. I just want to know if you know your schedules now or something, or obviously, we can, we can do it next weekend there, but, you know, the first day I would propose would be the fifteenth of May, six thirty, and.
Is that a CRA workshop, then? Is that what you're proposing?
Yeah.
Okay.
So Mr. LeCure, you're going to get individual with each person or?
Well, if anybody know, if that sound, if there's any problems we see right now, if you see one, get in touch with me tomorrow, the next day, but.
Well, you put me down, I am available.
Okay. So I'll just wait for for the next couple of days. If that's a problem, we'll look towards the twenty-ninth for the meeting, which is another.
I will not be here that day.
Okay.
Yes, the day after Memorial Day.
Yes, it is, okay. So we'll try for the fifty, or, you know, we can look at the schedule and look at another night, a Thursday, Wednesday, Thursday night, or something like that, if something happens with the fifteenth. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk? No comment?
Trying to recover.
Commissioner Kikta?
Nope, I have no comments.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Thank you. I know we'll do a formal presentation about our trip in the future with some pictures. Hopefully, not all of them make it to the slideshow. There's a few I don't like, but I just, I do want to thank you, Mayor, for, you know, how you spearheaded this program with Sister Cities. And I want to thank the city clerks that came with us. They were invaluable in their help and in keeping us on track. And for me, all the translation I needed as well for my cracker English to Greek, so I really appreciate that. Thank you both very much.
Everybody look on there of him talking Greek on there. Look, he should be on the city side.
Well, I said the last part I messed up. I think I said I'm going to kiss you all, and that's why everybody laughed. So, okay, it's okay.
But you learned a lot, though.
I did.
You know.
I said that.
I'm partially fluent now, right?
Commissioner Seber?
Actually, I was pretty amazed at how how many Greek words you did know. But, yeah, I'm going on about. I'm going on about eight hours of sleep in two days, so I had a great time. We learned a lot, and I know that the the mayors of all the cities were just unbelievably hospitable, and I'm glad that I made the trip. I see you're wearing your blue and white, too.
Commissioner Carr?
Thank you. Welcome back. I'm glad you all made it back safe. It's always exciting to have the board back in the United States. I just want to update you all. I did attend a town hall with Senator Nelson while you were in Greece. It was for elected officials, and they had some local high schoolers there as well. And he touched base on a lot of the hot topics that are going on. It was at the P S T A headquarters down in Saint Pete, Pinellas Park, Largo area. I'm not really sure where that lands. It was pretty interesting, I thought, overall. And then also, I wanted to say thank you to Commissioner Kikta for the invite to the Elks Lodge this past Friday night or Saturday night to honor the Officer of the Year, Firefighters of the Year, and Citizens of the Year. Enjoyed being in the community and seeing that. It really had a small-town feel, and these individuals were well-deserved. So thank you for helping with putting that all together and honoring these individuals.
For being there. Appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you. I know we're going to have a PowerPoint presentation on a trip to Greece, but I like to say that it was a very successful, the trip was very successful. We had the opportunity to exchange ideas with the mayors and the council. During the visit to Calymnos, we had the historic meeting with both councils. We, something that had never happened before. We discussed education, culture, and economic development between the assistant cities of Calymnos, Chalki, Simi, and Tarpon Springs. And I like to thank the the mayors for being, all the mayors have been a great host of the three islands. That's the mayor, Yannis Galavzis, the mayor, Lefteris Papadakaloukas, and Mayor Mihalis Patrol. All them, they were great, and it was nice to work with them and have all these discussions for regarding our sister cities. I was invited to meet the the president of Greece, the Honorable Pavlopoulos, when I arrived to Greece, when I arrived to Athens, and after I told him that the dedication of Tarpon Springs, they are there to visit the sister cities. He was so excited. He says, please bring him to my office. I'd like to meet him and thank him in person. So we did that on the way back to Athens. I thought that was great. The president was very, very kind and very, very nice and very, very friendly, so I appreciate that very much. Also, I had the opportunity to meet with the Prime Minister of Greece, the Honorable Alexis Tebras, to discuss issues affecting our sister cities. I got that information from the mayors of Chalki, Simi, and Calymnos via problems that